Great. Thank you all, everyone. Commissioner Eggenberger, could you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Eggenberger, here. Commissioner Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Janowski.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairperson Zuber. Here. I think that's the first time we've had 100% attendance in a long time. Very nice. Thank you all for coming. It feels very special. It does. We should celebrate.
It is July 1st.
It is July 1st. That's true. Do we have a...anybody want to make any motions about the minutes from last month?
Move to approve?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins. The W's have it again. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And, oh, I'm sorry, let the record reflect that we also have Patrick Sloan and Aaron Schluto here from the Township Planning Department. So, we have an agenda. Is there anything to add or take away at the last minute, Patrick?
No changes.
Okay, excellent. I'm entertaining a motion for acceptance of the agenda.
So move.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Lee and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. Patrick, communications, do we have anything outside of the packet that we received?
No additional communications outside of the packet and separate transmittals that have been sent regarding the master plan and regarding facade changes that are unrelated to anything on this agenda or general items.
Excellent. Thank you. Very good. We have a public comment session. Would any member of the public like to address the Planning Commission on any topic that's not on our agenda this evening? Okay, don't all speak at once. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. We do not have any public hearings this evening. We do not have any old business this evening. We have one item of new business. That is item number 133-DIR-8305. That is the Oakdale Recovery Center where we're considering a site plan amendment for parcel number 133-02-0040-005. That's also known as 43825 Michigan Ave. The property is located on the south side of Michigan Ave between Sheldon Road and Morton Taylor Road. The proposed use is an amendment to the existing site plan to remove eight parking spaces and add an outdoor play area. Patrick, please tell us more.
Thank you. The proposed site plan change is for Oakdale Recovery Center, which is located on the south side of Michigan Avenue between Sheldon Road and Morton Taylor Road. And some of the changes include renovating a 2,500-square-foot section of the building to use as a children's crisis support unit. And the state of Michigan requires a play area for this unit, so the applicant proposes to remove eight parking spaces on the south side of the building, which is on the rear side, in order to construct that required play area, which lowers the number of spaces from 64 down to 56. If the number of spaces that it was reduced to had complied with the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance, it's most likely that this review in this site plan would have been reviewed administratively. But because the removal of the eight parking spaces reduces it below the minimum required by the zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission reviews the site plan and has discretion to modify the number of required parking spaces pursuant to Section 4.01(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance. The proposed, or the existing, use of the site has been in place since 1993, so just over 30 years, and it's used as a state-licensed treatment center. It is synonymous to what the zoning ordinance would classify as a hospital use, which includes institutions licensed by the state to provide both inpatient and outpatient medical services. The site is located in the C3 zoning district, and hospitals are permitted uses in the C3 zoning district. For the parking, the subject's site was most recently modified in 2012 when a site plan was approved to expand the parking lot on the south side of the site and make improvements to landscaping and stormwater management. The zoning ordinance requires 58 parking spaces based on the mathematical formula provided by the applicant. The applicant proposes to remove eight parking spaces that are on the site currently, lowering the number from 64 to 56. So essentially, the zoning ordinance requires 58 parking spaces. The applicant proposes to keep 56. Based on our review of aerial photos from 2014 to 2024, during that 10-year period, we've reviewed about 38 aerial photos, and the site frequently has over 20 available parking spaces. In terms of the number of staff, the zoning ordinance estimates a little high on that. And in terms of the hospital parking standard, this is unlike a typical hospital where you may have a lot of visitor parking. An institution like this is not going to have a lot of visitor parking. There may be staff increases and decreases, but it's going to be less than a typical hospital. So our recommendation is that the Planning Commission lower the number of parking spaces required down to 56. Additionally, this same section of the ordinance allows the Planning Commission to require that the construction of parking spaces necessary for future traffic be deferred until the need for the projected parking is justified. This type of requirement would arise if there's illegal parking outside of the approved parking spaces, like parking on the lawn. There are areas on the south side of the site where additional parking could be constructed if future parking demand justifies additional spaces. So we're not concerned that the reduction in spaces would lead to a parking shortage on the site. There's a remedy by constructing more spaces if the need were to arrive in the future. We have a couple of other minor comments as conditions of approval that we recommend. First is that the fence be lowered to six feet in height and that the lighting fixtures comply with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. Those are relatively minor plan modifications. So with that, our recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment and approval of 56 parking spaces, subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following three conditions. First, that the proposed fence does not exceed a height of six feet. Second, that the fixtures on the south side of the building be modified to meet the requirements of Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. And three, pursuant to Section 4.01(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance, if Planning Services Division staff determines in the future that the parking demand exceeds the capacity of the parking lot, then the property owner must construct parking spaces necessary for future traffic after obtaining site plan approval for the same pursuant to Section 27.02 of the zoning ordinance. That concludes our staff report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Could I suggest in the model motion that item two say the light fixtures on the south side of the building? Because it just says the fixtures, and I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. Is the project sponsor here? Would you like to add anything to what Patrick said? If you could go to the microphone.
You don't feel like you have to.
I mean, you can't, you can't, you can tell us how awesome the Planning Commission is, just to, I mean...
I want to apologize for bringing you here on, for one item tonight.
Oh, no, we've got other things. Don't worry.
I do understand. I'm on the Commerce Township Planning Commission, so I had to be at a Planning Commission meeting one way or the other tonight. So we're doing just a upgrade to the building to put in a children's crisis support unit. And like Patrick said, one of the things that's required is that we put in a playground. We've got plenty of parking. There's normally, like you said, usually 16 to 20 empty spaces every time we've been out there, so I don't think parking's going to be an issue. And we hope you look kindly on our proposal and see fit to approve it.
Awesome. Could you please tell us who you are for the record?
Yeah, my name is Joe Loskell with Fusco, Shafer &amp; Papas Architects.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. And anybody else have anything to add? No? Okay. Anybody from the board have anything, any questions or thoughts?
I'd just like to say that I think that in a world where we have more than enough parking spaces, it's always nice to see less.
Exactly. We, I looked at the agenda. I'm like, this is probably going to be an easy one tonight because we're always, we're always down for reducing parking spaces.
Always in favor of getting rid of some parking spaces. But I do have a question for Patrick. Are we going to update our parking ordinance?
We will. The answer is yes.
Is that like number 10 on the agenda?
I know we've got a few things on the agenda, but...
Yeah, I would love to have it amended so that we don't have to come to the Planning Commission every time there's a modification. There are much better approaches. And I've got several notes, including some that I collected back in April at the American Planning Association Conference in Minneapolis. There were a number of speakers that have had success in their communities across the nation with either eliminating the parking minimums or modifying them in a way that makes it a lot easier, both for the appointed elected bodies and staff and applicants. So it's on one of the lists of things to do to reach out to other communities that have had success, see what they did, and then try to implement those best practices here. So definitely on the list.
Thank you.
I find myself really, really envious that you got to hear about parking at a conference. I mean...
Parking is super interesting.
I was on the edge of my seat.
It is.
Then you need to get a life.
Well, we look at, you know, we look at all these aerial photos, 38 aerial photos, and you see these empty parking spaces and, not just here, but across the township, and how much more productive those spaces could be, whether it's green space or building or public space, things like that.
Exactly. Bioswales, yeah.
It's just, the view of parking just was different 20 to 30 years ago than it is now, and that's, yeah, I don't think it's anybody's fault or anything. I guess it's just a change in times and thinking, that's all.
Yeah. It makes sense. Is there, there will be playground equipment, I assume. It's just not shown on the drawings.
They're going to park cars in it.
Put some old junkers in there for the kids to play on. Just kidding. So, okay, thank you. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the site plan amendment and approval of 56 parking spaces for Oakdale Recovery Center at 43825 Michigan Avenue, parcel 133-02-0040-005, subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following conditions. One, that the proposed fence does not exceed a height of six feet. Two, that the light fixtures on the south side of the building be modified to meet the requirements of Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. And three, pursuant to Section 4.01(c)(6) of the zoning ordinance, if Planning Services Division staff determines in the future that the parking demand exceeds the capacity of the parking lot, then the property owner must construct parking spaces necessary for future traffic after obtaining site plan approval for the same pursuant to Section 27.02 of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner Eggenberger, could you call the vote, please? Sure. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zuber. Yes. All right. Motion carries. Yeah, thank you.
Nice holiday.
You as well. Thank you. And Patrick, next steps are that they can apply for a building permit now, right?
That's correct, with a few, the plan modifications noted in our letter, but if they're there for the building permit, we'll just approve that with conditions so they can proceed with the building permits.
Okay. Good luck, gentlemen. Thank you very much. All right. Very good. Next item on our agenda is the master plan. Aaron, you have some fun and exciting stuff for us tonight.
Oh, always.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Are those your kids?
Yeah, those are my, those are my kids.
Are they part of the master plan?
Yeah.
Were they part of your master plan, obviously?
That's kind of personal.
Yeah, that's just the background. No, we went up to Quamanon Falls last summer, and there was a gnome scavenger hunt, so they got the things and...
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
They are cute. How old are they?
My boy is nine, 10 the end of the month, and my daughter is six.
Awesome. Very cute.
Hold on, it's, I gotta...
Okay, we're enjoying the picture.
Bend. I mean, it's a nice picture to look at.
It is.
You know?
Very scenic. I like their hats.
I have to extend it, so I don't know why it's not working. So while I'm finishing this, did everyone get a chance to review and read all of the text and everything that came out?
Yeah, I saw, I saw one typo in there.
Just one? Good.
No. I know. I thought, I think she did, actually.
I caught some typos.
Well, if it makes, you know, it went through myself. It went through a couple of our interns to look at, so at this point, you know, we'd hoped that we had caught all of them, but occasionally there's one or two that, that sneak by a bunch of people, but...
Just kidding.
What's that?
Even worse. I'm just kidding.
Was under. I mean, it's very, it's very minor. I'm sure it was just a missed keystroke.
So one thing I wanted to just make sure that we're kind of clear on, and this is, this is a summary of the previous discussions that we've had, both on June 3rd and June 17th. So these are the sections that, that have been sent to you, that we've looked at, and that we've kind of discussed in summary here at the last two meetings. Now, any comments or anything that you send or that we want to talk about, that's great. And if you, seriously, when you find typos, please send them, send them my way, or if there's something you want to discuss. But if there's no discussion, or there's no comments, or no anything you want to discuss, then those sections are moving forward to be formatted by our consultants. So, for example, on June 3rd, the executive summary, the, what is the master plan, the key planning terms, there really wasn't any discussion on those. Those have been sent off to McKenna for formatting. So, and same thing with the history of Canton and the past planning efforts. So if there's anything that we've discussed previously, if that wasn't made clear, I apologize for that. But if, if there's anything that we've discussed previously that you want to go back to, please let me know, because we don't want to make McKenna do, you know, multiple, multiple edits on something that we've looked at. The nodes, the mixed-use neighborhood nodes, we're going to be talking about in a little bit more detail today because the commission asked for some examples, some visual examples to discuss, so we have that. But we've discussed the specialty planning areas now twice, so your edits and updates will be incorporated into that text. If you want to see it all again, I can send you the updated one for, for final review. Otherwise, it's also going to McKenna for final formatting. So is there anything that we've discussed the previous two meetings that you'd like to go back and discuss in any detail? Fabulous. Okay. So then tonight, we're going to continue our discussion on the mixed-use neighborhood nodes. And then the other two sections that were sent to you for discussion tonight was on the community infrastructure and demographics. Okay? Are there any questions before we, before we jump in? Cool. Okay, so the printout for the entire presentation, as always, is on, on your desk there, but these are very similar slides to what we've looked at the last, what we looked at last time. What a neighborhood node is and why it's important and why we want to continue to look at them at certain locations in our community. So they are to be designed as walkable areas, connections to surrounding residential neighborhoods. As part of this, we want to incorporate multimodal elements such as bike racks, connections to trails and existing pathways, and then where we can plan for future connections for mass transit through the community. We want to focus on community-enriching uses, so we do not want any big-box stores. We do not want auto-centric uses such as drive-throughs, car washes, anything related to those. We want these areas to be small-scale, neighborhood-type uses. The mix of the uses for the residents to fulfill their daily needs, such as small retail, local shopping, those types of things. Again, the focus on the mixed use. And we want these areas to feel part of the neighborhood. They're servicing the neighborhood residents. It's not meant to be a regional destination. Right? So this is not, these neighborhood nodes are not intended to be a continuation or an establishment of another Ford Road or Michigan Avenue. Those already exist, and they have, they have a place in the community, and we want them where they are. But there are areas where these neighborhood nodes could serve the neighborhood without being obtrusive to the neighbors. And we have them separated in two different types. So the first one, as identified on the future land use map, is an intersection node. So these are the general areas where a neighborhood mixed-use development could be suitable. Because we did not identify as anything as parcel-specific, we have indicated that this could be used within 1,000 feet of this intersection designation. Now, as we go through this, this is also some sample language that we can incorporate into our ordinance. As I mentioned last meeting, we want to develop the mixed-use neighborhood node ordinance language in tandem with the master plan. So that way, once the master plan is adopted, we already have some language that we've discussed here, and that regulatory language is in place for developers to reference when they come forward with, with projects. As I've mentioned before, these areas are starting, already starting to get interest from developers on what they could put there. So what's important about these intersection nodes that differentiates them from the parcel is that there are special considerations in these areas related to traffic, compatibility with the existing neighborhood, or environmental impacts that need to be looked at. And I added this here, that these areas would require traffic and environmental studies to make sure that these areas could be viable for any kind of development here. The one area we looked at that's included on the neighborhood node map is Ford and Beck. So these have been identified as intersection nodes, as areas that could be opportune for development in the future. Now, as you can see, the Fellows Creek and the drain, Ford and Beck, the traffic issues, we know that this is a problematic area. We know that this area is going to take a lot of study from a lot of different, different viewpoints. But this is an area that has garnered some interest from developers to put something here. So it's worthwhile for us to include this on our master plan, in our master plan, and on the future land use map as a consideration for future development. But as we've identified it as an intersection node, we want to have some control over what goes in that area. So that way, it's not a gas station. It's not a drive-through restaurant that's going to incur additional traffic in that area, but something that could service the neighborhood. I know this, this intersection caused a lot of discussion last time, so that's why I put it, put it first, so we could continue that discussion and, and keep going with Which neighborhood? There's neighborhoods to the north, to the northeast. There's residential neighborhoods to the southwest.
Right. Like, I live in Sunflower, and I will walk down to Hanford and Canton Center. Maybe get a little Menchies, Patrick. And that, to me...
Do you see Patrick there?
Well, Patrick and I live in the same neighborhood, so we have some connections. And I see that as a neighborhood node that makes sense. There is no way I would ever walk up to this area from Sunflower, and I'm just wondering which residential neighborhood would. I mean, like you say, there's crazy traffic. I also understand that you're trying to say we want to, we want to have some regulation, I guess, because people are going to be coming in. But to call it a possible neighborhood node, that you have visions that people are going to be walking to it, just doesn't make sense to me.
All right. I think that's somewhat of a, somewhat of a two-way street, because on the south side of Ford Road with the, if, we'll talk about the southeast corner at Ford and Beck, we don't see it there, but there's some large neighborhoods to the southeast. The people that live there would probably not walk up to Menchies from where they are because of the Ford Road crossing, but they may patronize something that was local to their specific neighborhood.
But I can see, like, like when Mary's was there, the farm, the farm produce place. Like, I would swing by there on my way. I wouldn't walk there, but I don't live within walking distance. But, but it was a small business that just was easy to get in and out of when the traffic wasn't bad. And, you know, something like that would probably support the neighborhood.
Obviously, we could put in sidewalks. I just, it, it doesn't strike me as something that's within a neighborhood.
But I think we could, if it's a PDD, we can say that they have to put in sidewalks so people in the neighborhood could walk there, right?
And Canton Center Road, just for comparison, where you're talking about at Menchies, is already five lanes. We don't, we're not dealing with five lanes here. I, I don't...
Ford, they are.
Not right there, we're not. I mean, there's no, it's not right at the intersection there, is, yes, I will give you that. But I, I think Canton Center is every bit as busy as what, maybe not in terms of pure volume, but I don't, I don't, I don't think we're necessarily talking about apples and oranges here. I guess my question is, what do you envision then on those properties, if you don't see a node-type development?
Well, we have a couple of the node concepts here that we've identified, right? So I mean, these are...
No, I'm asking Commissioner Eggenberger what she sees.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking to me. I apologize.
Right. That's my concern, is that I don't see any of these suggestions as something that feels good.
What do you see? That's my question. What do you see there, then?
Well, I understand what I said last, whenever that, that a park doesn't necessarily make sense, but, but what other options are there? Is this really the only option you have? Add more traffic to this area?
Well, right now, those areas southwest, southeast of Beck are designated on the future land use map as residential. So there is also the potential that someone could develop these properties for another subdivision. So this is giving an opportunity for us to look at this area and say, do we want more residential developments in this area, where there's already traffic and environmental concerns? Or look at it and say, this could be something that keeps this area of low-impact, walkable, in-service to areas that are already existing. It doesn't preclude someone from coming in and doing a residential development, because the underlying future land use map, future land use classifications isn't changing. This is just giving another opportunity for something to go into that area. But it would be small-scale, residential-focused, retail, restaurant, that type of thing. Now, let me, let me pose this question, because we're focusing on this, this intersection. I know that this intersection is the most problematic, which is why I brought it to, brought it here. But we do have other intersections in these neighborhood nodes. Are your concerns intersection node-wide, or is it just this intersection specifically? Okay, so you don't have issues with any other, any other area? It's just this one specifically?
I think the one at Hanford and Canton Center.
Uh huh.
And works.
Yeah.
People walk to it, and I do walk across to Canton Center to get my car.
So do I.
So I'm not, I don't feel the same way about Canton Center that I do.
I walk across Ford Road when I go for a walk. There's traffic lights. That's what they're there for.
And these areas, I mean, there's, as we've, as I've mentioned, there's going to be a lot of improvements to these areas if there's going to be something developed. There's going to be traffic studies. There's going to be road improvements, sidewalk infrastructure, environmental impacts. All of those things will have to be looked at in considerable detail before anything gets, gets approved.
I think the bigger issue for this intersection, more so than traffic, is just the general engineering, about what to do with Fellows Creek and the drain. Those are more problematic, I think, than any traffic issue. I think traffic can be addressed one way or the other. But those two issues, and it's funny that Fellows Creek just happens to dip down as close to the road as it does right there.
Remember when the house was there?
Everywhere else, it's not as problematic, but for that intersection to get developed with anything, you're talking about huge dollars and significant engineering and all that sort of, and I'm, you know, maybe I'm getting out of my lane a little bit when I start talking about engineering, but...
Out of your lane.
But those are, but those are the, but those are the bigger issues I see, more so than the traffic issue, at that, just at this intersection. That's why I don't necessarily have, I don't have any problem with the other neighborhood-intersection nodes that you're talking about. I just don't see those same kind of issues. This one is just unique.
Mm-hmm.
I think the other neighborhood nodes that you're mentioning on the map are more, I could see a part of the neighborhood.
I think one of the thing that terrifies me about this intersection is if someone tried to put a gas station there, right? Because it encourages traffic. But if you put something there, like a picnic basket, basket, or, I don't know, one of the, like...
Specialty grocery stores.
Yeah.
Specialty grocery stores. Yeah, the picnic basket is something that we've heard from a lot of people, that they say that they would want to be in their immediate neighborhood. And so that would be the kind of, the kind of tenant that, that could work well. Now, this is the intersection right here at Ford and Beck, so the color coding isn't, the legend isn't there for you. But these are designated as single-family residential districts in, in the future land use map. So the reasons that these areas have not been developed for residential is likely the, the traffic and the environmental impacts with the drain and the creek. So this doesn't mean by putting this intersection there that a residential development could come in there, because this is just intersection. This is what we want to see. But the underlying future land use classification is not changing. The zoning is not going to change right away. So there's still the potential that this area could be developed for a residential neighborhood. Or we start to look at it and say, this could be something that could work for a small neighborhood node that would have something like a picnic basket or something that's small-scale retail.
Maybe, whatever...
Maybe whatever one's getting hung up on with regard to the word node.
We're not all hung up on it.
Well.
Some of us are more hung up than others.
Is the is the notion of it being walkable. And if you had something like a picnic basket, and I know that seems to be the benchmark that everyone is using, which would be great, similar situation if you had a Greenland market going in here or whatever. As Commissioner Zubert mentioned, when Mary's was there, it was a convenient place to pull in on your way home from Ann Arbor or wherever to get something or or whatever. Same idea with a with a store type there, as opposed to a node where maybe you have a mixed-use residential, small stores, an ice cream store, whatever the case may be, that where you're trying to encourage foot traffic. Maybe foot traffic is not the ideal here. If you have just a development that's anything we do and can is going to increase traffic in theory. But if we get off the idea of it being walkable or being pedestrian-friendly, maybe that's, maybe that's where people are getting a little down in the weeds a little bit, I think.
Yeah, and I understand, but and I agree with you.
No, I didn't say.
I do. I mean you.
I didn't say you.
You took that well.
But if you, since you called it out, that's fine.
But I think, I think you're right. I think thinking of it as walkable just does not feel like.
It's ruffling your fur.
It's ruffling my fur. And and maybe having one, one little store there feels better to me than a strip mall with lots of different reasons for people to.
If I, if I could, ma'am chair, through you to the rest of the commission, I think one thing is we want to continue to focus on the fact that it is, it is a planning exercise. And quite frankly, everything or anything that would come this way is going to come by this body, right? And we have an opportunity to vet it as such. So I I think, I want to take the focus and put it back on the planning exercise and and not so much what could go there, but just what what we have an ability to to plan for in a space like this. So thank you, ma'am chair.
I think that makes sense. But so what do we say then? Is this our option, residential or neighborhood node?
Well, this is, this is an option for this area. Now, we've, we've talked at length about these intersection neighborhood nodes. And as you've said, that you like this idea elsewhere. It's just at this intersection, you're having a hiccup there. So I guess I need to know from the commission, is that a general consensus where you don't want this at this intersection? Or you're willing to put it at that intersection? And we can firm up language and we can make sure it's done the way we want to as the master plan unfolds.
The other important part to keep in mind is that this is a master plan. This is not etched in stone.
Right.
And there's a, okay, we can master plan it for an intersection node. Doesn't mean that's what's going to happen here.
No, the developer still has to come forward with a with a plan, with an idea, with the traffic studies, with everything that the planning commission will look at, that staff will look at, engineering will look at. So there's any number of opportunities where something could not move forward, especially at this intersection. This is just opening it up and giving it an opportunity.
Adding another option to the existing options.
Yes.
Right? Everything else remains the same, and this is being added on.
The other thing that I will note is the intersection won't look the way that it does right now in a couple of years because there's a plan to do improvements at this intersection. So I think that's something to keep in mind as you're thinking about the future land use.
Well, I agree that there's actually residential development that has not been completed. There's a house. Is it 2,000 feet south of it? He's been building on that for, he's been building on that for, I saw the plans he had for that. Excuse me, I don't mean to highlight that. But anyway, it's been years, so I see things happening. But you know what I think this really highlights? The issues that are below the surface. I think you need to identify that. So if anyone comes in, they already know what they got to deal with. I didn't realize all those drains were.
They got to deal with Nancy.
Yeah. But I think it's something worth stating because something is going to go there eventually. So I think you're on the right track. It's just that I think you need to show what's beneath the surface. Because you're right, that's the issue. It's more than the traffic, but they need to know that when they come in. Did you know you have all these other issues? But I see neighborhood, you're not going to stop the development if they want to come there. So you got to plan for it. You got to put it in here, and you got to acknowledge it. As you said, it's a planning exercise.
And probably somebody will come along someday to say, yeah, we're willing to take this on. I mean, just like we've talked about with the Topgolf development. I mean, your average developer probably wouldn't even tackle that property because of all the wetlands that are there. But they seem to think they can make it work. So there will, there will, there will be somebody that comes along with that that way of thinking. But, you know, I just, but Commissioner Lee is right. I mean, it should be widely known what the hurdles are that potentially developing that intersection.
Oh, absolutely.
Can we go back to the aerial real quick? Okay, so, I mean, almost every intersection along Beck needs expansion. Even just like a right turn lane, Beck doesn't have one, and it causes issues for that whole intersection. And there's blind spots coming from northbound all the time, so you can't, you can't see them. So, you know, given that, you know, the commissioners are right. The right developer will do, a good developer will do his or her due diligence and and figure out. You can actually widen that Beck Road and put culverts. It's a permitting nightmare, but it couldn't be done. So we shouldn't deter development because because of these challenges. I think we should leave it open to possibilities to where a developer can come in, and we have the freedom to assess that development. And the master plan and ordinance gives us some flexibility to, you know, offer improvements or changes or deny or approve them. Is every development going to be a PDD for this particular intersection?
If we were to move forward as a node, we could require any node or parcel node intersection, any kind of neighborhood node project could require a PDD. That would be something that we would work through in the ordinance language.
So that gives.
To make sure that we had the control over it and the multiple reviews.
That gives you more control.
Right.
And it gives us more flexibility.
That's something that we've been talking about as we've kind of started to brainstorm through the ordinance language process as well. Not just, I mean, this is looking at the idea of it and seeing where it could go, but then trying to figure out how we could implement and how we can regulate it. That's, that's, that's a different arm that we're trying to wrangle into our process, but still, we have to keep separate. If that makes sense.
So I guess I'm trying to picture in my mind, Erin, if you want to identify this intersection and others as node node areas, how is that designated in the, how do you picture that being designated in the master plan? Just here on the future land use map, or is there going to be a narrative or?
Yep, on the future land use map, and then there's the the text, the text explaining it, which you all had had received a couple of weeks ago, and it was also part of your packet this this week as well. So there's, there's explanations on what an intersection node is, what a parcel node is, what we want to see there, noting what types of uses that we would want to go there, the the types of uses we do not want there. As I mentioned, the auto-centric, the big boxes, those types of things. Making sure there's walkable connections, bikeable connections. Because while this area may, you know, has those constraints, right? But other ones that are identified on the map don't have those same things. So we want to make sure that those elements are brought into other other places as well. So that's part of the narrative where we where we explain exactly.
Maybe this is just the word you used just now, but maybe, I don't want to speak for the entire commission, but you use the word, this is what we want to see. Obviously, there's questions about, again, it seems to be this particular intersection seems to be an issue for a lot, a lot of reasons. It's understandable. Is it, is it better to word it or put somewhere in there that said? Again, it's semantics, possible uses, as opposed to say, this is what we want to see. I mean, don't make it sound, don't make, don't make it sound so mandatory, I guess.
The language in the the narrative that I had provided summarizes what ones, and I don't know the words I exactly use. Maybe it was, we want to see, or possible uses that could go there. But there was explanation on the types of uses that could go there, not not super-specific, but, you know, retail, small restaurants, those types of things. But then explicitly said, we do not want, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't, I don't have the language memorized, but we don't want gas stations. We don't want drive-throughs. That's not auto.
Truck stops, that was on there.
Truck stops? Yeah, all of those things we would not want in these areas. That's not, that's not the visual example of of what we want in these areas.
I was finally, I was, I was finally able to open your, open the documents there in the Google.
But if there's language in there that you want to explore or alternate words, say, possible as to we should, or, you know, we can go over those in as much as we can, and we can talk anytime.
I'm fine.
And you will all see the text when it's all put together. Again, this is just an opportunity for you, for us to look at how things, we've been talking about neighborhood nodes. We've been talking about future land use map and these concepts for a long time. Now you kind of see where we're going with it and the text as it's been drafted. So if you're comfortable with that, then it will go for the formatting. And then you'll see it all again in one big, pretty document. We just want to make sure that we've ironed out as many of these crinkles as we possibly can before it goes to the final pretty product.
Does the, does anyone on the commission agree with Commissioner Agonberger?
Wow.
Wow. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Talk about. She just drove that bus right over.
I'm just kidding. Does, I mean, is there anybody who feels that we should give this?
I think I just said I am okay with it.
You're okay with it. That's what I meant. Does anyone agree with her being okay with it? I don't know.
I, I like that it sounds like we're going to have a fair amount of control.
You're okay.
I'm okay.
You're okay. Okay.
But like you said, they're going to have to come through me.
They are. You are the.
Nancy, you better check to see if you got track marks on your, track marks on your back.
I will say, I think the language lets people know, like, what we are looking for and what we are not looking for. And I think that's helpful in weeding out things that will come before.
Well, and what, and what may be a node, a neighborhood node to us might be different to a developer.
Exactly.
So.
And that's where the language comes in to make sure that that's as ironed out as possible. So if there's, if there's things that you see from from your perspective that there's a hole, let me know so we can make sure we sew that sew that up quickly because we don't want to give, find anything after it's been adopted that we should have addressed beforehand.
I think, I think the discussion's been helpful.
Good.
Okay.
You can put it in Drive now, Dawn.
I'm only kidding. It was a joke.
This is only slide six, so we've got, we've got more to.
But you did admit that you put this one up first to spark debate.
I did, I did. But I'd also have the visual examples, so if you want to, we can jump right to those. But if you're, if you're comfortable, if we've swayed you without even having to show you those, then that's. Okay. Okay, so the parcel nodes. This one didn't garner as much discussion last time. Was there anything that we wanted to address with this one?
This is the one that had the, probably the nicest examples.
These are the ones that were drawn up from McKenna. Lots in Cherry Hill is this property in particular, and we went through this exercise here. But just to show you how things can kind of look in in a real, real-world example. So here's a development of a vacant site that did somewhat of a a mixed-use development. So this was Novi at the corner, the northwest corner of Meadowbrook and Grand River in the year 2000. So the corner is largely vacant. The big white box there is the soccer zone, soccer sports complex there. And then in 2023, this is what we have. So this area was developed for commercial office, and then there's townhomes behind it. So it's developed into three separate parcels. So the large one on the left there is all the townhomes. You can see the image there. And the arrows is trying to point to exactly where it is on the site. I didn't do an area, didn't do an area now, an area estimate on this. Now, this is, this is a bigger area, and there's actually three separate parcels. So the two, the townhomes on the left and then the the commercial to the south and to the east, those were developed first. The townhomes that are kind of shaped in this arch behind it, that one is still in process, and that one was, is being developed right now. But the other ones were done in the early 2000s. Now, you can see by the examples of the commercial buildings, it's all single-story, but they do have some architectural elements there. They have the the spire. They have the dormers that looks like it's like it's a second story, even though it's not. So they do have that element of height, even though it's it's fake. They have outdoor gazebo there for gathering spaces in between the two buildings. So they're, they did try to do some of these, the mixed-use elements. And you can see on this here, these, the green outlined are some outdoor green space areas. And then the pink is pathways and walkways. So there's connections all the way along the townhomes. There's the green center kind of hangout area. And then they have connections either walking or driving to the sports complex to the south, to the north, sorry. Well, this, I chose, we looked at these areas because this is a very busy intersection. I used to live in that area, so this is a very busy intersection. So this is areas where we want to, we wanted to show you examples where things were dense and highly trafficked. Some of the other mixed-use examples that we had looked at are in downtown Ann Arbor or downtown Northville, where it's all very walkable and 25 miles an hour. But that's not where some of this, some of these mixed-use ideas or nodes could go. We wanted to show you things that that were more comparable to what Canton is facing, especially at the intersections.
So this, this area is approximately 14 mile, I mean, 14 acres.
Okay.
Approximately. I just measured it on Google. So we have that cherry, I mean, the Ford and Beck, that's 12, 12 acres.
And this one's 14.
Yeah.
He's good at this.
Yeah, that's very interesting.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So, yeah, there's connections between the commercial and all of the residential townhomes and everything behind it. So not only a sidewalk system, but certainly for motor vehicles and whatnot. Okay, so that was a development of a vacant site, showing you how a mix of uses could be incorporated. So here's an example of a redevelopment of a site, and we're going all the way to Royal Oak. So the corner, southwest corner of Woodward, Woodward Avenue and 13 Mile. So in the southwest portion of this area is the hospital, Royal Oak Beaumont. And right there at the corner, there's a oddly-shaped strip mall. And this was built somewhere between 1940 and 1973, based on the aerials. This was a highly-trafficked, desirable strip mall at one point. But as of 2006, 2007, it started to fall into disrepair. There wasn't a lot of maintenance. There wasn't a lot of investment going on. So this is what it looked like in 2015. 2017, it was demoed. And this was the project, is the project that was proposed for redevelopment. So unfortunately, this is looking south, so it's kind of backwards. But you can see the hospital in the on the horizon. There's a total of six buildings for a mix of restaurants, retail, gyms. And then the taller building there in the back is intended to be a six-story, five-story hotel. So all of these uses are intended to serve not only the area, but certainly those who are coming to the hospital either for short or long-term stays. And then there's some walking paths, and there's some nice architectural and and urban design elements here to garner interest. I had that on there twice. Sorry about that. Okay, so here's, here's the site again. So this is what it looks like today. You can see that there's several buildings there. One of them is. You can see that there's several buildings there. One of them is the Woodward Corner Market. It's Meyer, Meyer Market. It's very, very nice. There's a Crumble Cookie. You can see that they do some interesting parallel parking along the buildings here. There's pedestrian walking spaces. And benches and elements like that. There, I don't, I apologize. I did not, I did not do that. Grab that, grab that figure. Woodward and 13 Mile. This is just one, this is one property.
I mean, I'm amazed that the Ford Road was-
Yeah.
Now, I see they, on this one, I don't think it's on this picture, they have a hotel proposed on this property?
Yeah, so it's-
Yeah, we don't want a hotel.
Currently under construction.
Not at Ford and Beck.
But-
I mean, Nancy wouldn't stay there.
They have some green space. There's plenty of walkable and bikeable areas throughout this-
But what about the human trafficking?
Throughout this development? Okay, they have a couple of, of little green pathways. And then again, the, the pink highlights the curvilinear walkways for people to sit, enjoy, have their, have their crumble cookie, have their whatever. 16 acres? 16 acres? 16.
That's, that property, 16 acres?
Yeah, this, this property is 16 acres. And so highlighted here in the red, this building is currently under construction. And this is gonna be the, the five sto, five-story Hyatt Hotel. So these are just a couple of examples of what could, what could go in these areas, right? Now, these are all single-story. They don't have the, the two-story, but they're all designed with, you know, unique, modern architecture, a lot of windows, so people can see what's going on in each one of those. Nothing is auto-centric. There are no car washes. There's no auto detailing, nothing. The, there's the market there that garners a lot of foot traffic. There's a couple of small, little Beaumont-esque offices, medical offices. But for the most part, there's a gym in there, there's a brewery, there's a lot of restaurants, Crumble Cookie. My kids make me go there all the time.
You've mentioned Crumble Cookie several times.
So, and it's, it's very easily trafficked and accessible, not only from Woodward, from 13, but also from the hospital, which this, this roadway right here. So anyone who needs to go and get food, who doesn't want cafeteria food, can easily go to any one of these-
Crumble Cookie.
You know, sometimes you need the sugar. I'm just saying.
So that has a lot of parking.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wonder if you have something with so much parking, does that encourage people to drive?
Yes. I mean, we're looking at a number of different, different things here, right? So because it's located near a hospital, there's not a lot of people who bike to the hospital unless you work there, right? So this is, this is kind of catering not only to people in the area, but also those who are coming to the hospital either, either for short or long-term stays. So there is a lot of parking in this example. When we were to look at our situation, we might say, we don't need that much parking or whatever. But there's also elements here, given their ownership structure, that if they don't need that much parking, those, these, these areas could be developed with additional buildings in the future.
Yeah, the examples that you gave us, I just noticed there's a lot less parking than, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is a real-world example, and I don't know if Royal Oak feels that this is too much, or if it was justified, or, or what their long-term, term goals are. But that would be something we would look at very, very carefully as, as we develop any of our, our mixed-use type of projects.
I would just, I've had a history with parking. It's always been an issue. We don't have tran, we don't have transit, which is our problem. Detroit actually had double, whatever square footage of building there was, there was equal square footage of parking every time. And it was built in, designed because we don't have transit. As we go through this process, I'm hoping that we talk about transit, which would mean we would need less parking. And it automatically goes together if we do it the right way. Cause younger people, I think, are gonna be doing that if we got it. Cause you're not gonna keep them here if we don't. Even Gilbert says, I mean, what's his name? Yeah, he says the same thing. And that was one of his thesis. I said, dang, I've been saying that for 30 years. But the point is, we gotta buy into transit and real transit. And we have, from experience, a bus line right now that doesn't even go out to Canton. Right now, bus line, we can't. The closest is at the factory, I believe, on Michigan.
Michigan.
Westland.
Yeah.
Yes, Westland.
And Wayne.
Yeah, it stops.
I mean, things that encourage this will help us with our parking.
Great.
Just a general statement, that's all.
And that's something that our transportation section, which we're, we're still working on with our, with our consultants, that is something that is addressed in detail in, in that section. And as you can see here on the neighborhood node concepts, the one at Lotsen Warren here, it does note a future transit access. So we have even incorporated that into these conceptual nodes, that it's important to look at other types of, of transit. Thank you.
So Nancy, if they put in a Pilates studio and a crumble cookie and a coffee shop.
Oh, I do love a coffee shop.
I mean, wouldn't you?
Well, the fact that it was so, so many acres, I think I'm- Your Lotsen Cherry Hill, how many acres are you looking at here?
I apologize. I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm so sorry. Next, next time I'll, next time I'll have that all done, and no one will ask.
This year is way different.
Right.
Yeah.
Eleven? No. Seven? Fifty-five? I have no idea.
But the terms are different. The terms are different too. I mean, Lotsen Cherry Hill is a quote-unquote neighborhood node, Ford and Beck.
I'm just, when I'm looking at, you know, this, trying to see how much space is that taking?
I don't know if that's back for, for the hospital.
About eight, I apologize. It's about eight acres. Lotsen Cherry Hill is about eight acres. So not everything is going to be developed to this degree, right? Cause you're, we're limited on, on area and size, and certainly we want anything to be scaled correctly to the neighborhood.
Man, would you, would you consider this a node?
Not necessarily. I was just looking at mixed-use type of, type of opportunities. This is an anchor. I mean, this is supporting an anchor here. Yeah. So it's a little different. I was just trying to show you examples of really high-traffic areas on how mixed-use could be implemented for this.
Gotcha.
And certainly this one's interesting because it has the hotel component to it. Everything's still single-story on the, the retail, but adding the hotel does, does, does change that component a bit.
I think that's where I get a little confused when we talk about mixed-use and then we-
That is apparently-
Crumble Cookie, have you noticed a Crumble Cookie and Mentos have figured predominantly in this conversation?
I'm really getting hungry. I want dessert now.
Okay, I'm sorry, Aaron. You're doing great though, cause we are flying through here. This is well done.
I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk slower.
No, do not feel you need to do that, cause we're already on page.
Okay, well, so I've sent all the mixed, the mixed-use narrative to you as well. Was there anything that was contained within the text that you wanted to discuss? This is kind of, this is it in relation to, to the node discussion.
I see Professor, I see Professor, Professor Zuber put her red lines all through what I see.
I do have, I-
Were you an English major?
Was everybody able to access it through, through the OneDrive link that I sent?
Yes.
Okay, so it's there, and if anybody wants to run through it, if there's edits, if there's notes that you, as you're reading through it and you have a question, you can throw that on there. I know that Chair Zuber has already done that this afternoon, so thank you very much.
I might, I might have another go now that I have, if I had a chance to like, think through like, what you're saying about. Cause I was looking more at, at grammar and punctuation.
I just made a change myself to Aaron's, um, the telecommunications section.
The, the other two chapters, I don't have any real slides for this, but the other two chapters that were sent off to you all was related to community infrastructure and the demographic shifts. The community infrastructure focused on water and sewer, police and fire, telecommunications. Is there anything related to that that you would like to discuss?
So with regard to telecommunications, Aaron, and I, and I touched on a little bit in the, in the text that I put in it, the little bit that's in there about telecommunications, it seems to be focused on wireless and towers and such. My ask is, don't make it exclusive to that. Make sure that we're talking about fiber and infrastructure as a whole, not just, not just towers. I don't want people to get freaked out about that Canton's gonna become an antenna farm.
Yeah, and, and certain things, this, that was intended as a very brief summary. We will talk about that a little bit more in other chapters as, as it's applicable. I am not a telecommunications expert, so I did send that section off to our IT director for him to kind of expand on. So there may be some more that comes for, from him in the future. But if there's more things that need to be addressed, please let me know. Again, I'm not a telecommunications expert.
I just put very short comment in, that's, I mean, just, for, for the purposes of that section right there. If there's gonna be more in-depth conversation, that's, that's fine. I just don't want, I just don't want it thought that we're just focused on one particular type of infrastructure.
No, I totally agree, yeah. And there is a little bit more on the emergency management. I was able to speak to our emergency management, management coordinator this afternoon. So he provided a few fine-tuned details. Nothing substantive is gonna be changed in that. It's just providing a little bit more background on, on the team and what they do to prepare us for emergencies and also to be ready and to jump into action when emergencies take place. But nothing substantive will be changed on that front.
Aaron, there isn't anything in here on the drains.
We talked about drains on the natural features section, cause it flows into the tributary, which flows into the creeks and everything else, so that's, that's included in that section.
Okay.
Would you like to include it in the, in this, this part as well? Or at least referencing it to that?
I think referencing it would be okay.
Especially when we're talking about stormwater and all that sort of thing.
Okay. Anything else with community infrastructure? Demographic shifts? This is just talking about population?
I thought that was fascinating.
Age breakdown?
Yeah.
I guess I can see where we've gone and where we've come from.
We will get into, we didn't talk too much in this area about housing and medium home income and homeownership and stuff. That will be addressed in the, the housing section.
Okay.
This is showing how, how people are and who the people are that live here.
I think one thing, demographics-wise, that's important in our community is the religious diversity.
Okay.
And that isn't mentioned, and I, I mention that because we have a number of faith houses that are coming into the community, and I think it's important from a planning perspective.
Okay, I'll check at the census and see how we have that. If not, I can, I, I don't know if I'll be able to focus on a shifting, if that's not included in the census data. But I can definitely bring it up that that's, we are becoming more diversified in that, in that sense as well. Okay, thank you.
Going back to infrastructure real quick, Aaron. Hopped into my head, since we were talking about stormwater and all that thing. But with regard to utilities, and maybe this is not our domain to discuss, but should there be anything in here about power? Meaning, I mean, I know we have a substation, but we, we keep hearing the doom and gloom about how our, our power system is gonna be overtaxed. We're not, obviously, we're not in a situation like California is or some other parts of the country. But do we run the risk of that happening here? And if so, do, does there need to be planning for that? To the extent that the, that a, a small jurisdiction has that ability?
I don't know if it's something we can say that we're going to do, but certainly, you know, there could be language in there noting the reliance, especially with the electric vehicle infrastructure that we want to pursue, things that we need to start working with local energy companies, things like that. Pursu, you know, there's ways to phrase it where it's, we want to pursue that, but we, understanding the limitations of local government that we can't make policy.
Yeah, especially with some of our neighborhoods really having spotty power available, so. Yeah, like Cherry Hill Village and that, some, some of the subdivisions to the west end of Canton, kind of around Ford Road have talked about that when they've come in. Like the, the subdivision at Napier and Ford, some people were complaining about power going out fairly often out that way. Are they? Your mic.
They're working on this, the substation. I've seen them, and there's been enough complaints and stuff. There's usually crews out there. I see them upgrading it. And every time I've had a power outage, except for once, it was the transformer. But all the other times, and it, it happens very regularly.
Yeah.
Ideal times, December, when it's cold.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or the heat of summer when you're running your conditioner, yeah.
No, I haven't had that happen, no. Just, just the ice.
Usually only when you need it that it's gone.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it's really super cold, so.
Is there anything else related to, yes?
But, but the consideration for the power, when you look at that, that substation is probably where you wanna put, if you want economical, viable place to put a charging, these, these higher charging, it'd be right in that area. As you run farther away, the costs just become astronomical, cause you have to consider degradation of the cables. So you have to upsize them, and then you're running them, it's super, super expensive. It just becomes untangible at a certain point.
Anything else related to these? Okay, now, you've given me some great notes, and I really appreciate that, so thank you. Is, are these sections things with the notes and with the changes that are going to be made in some of the edits? Is this something that you want to see come back to you before it goes to final formatting? Or do you feel comfortable with where we are, the direction we're going, for these edits to be made and then have it come back to you when it's more, when it's done? I can send it to you. That way, it's not in a, in a formal meeting, so if you have the time to look at it, kind of thing. Just wanna make sure we keep moving, keep moving forward.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I don't get the sense that we need to see it again before it goes to final.
This doesn't feel like it's anything substantive that we have to-
Unless Nancy wants to veto the node section.
I'm just gonna start calling her every day. It's okay.
We're just gonna call you Node Nancy from now on.
Neighborhood Node Nancy?
NNN.
No Node Nancy.
And are we comfortable with the, the node language as it's been drafted currently?
Ask her.
I mean, I made some changes grammatically.
Yes, okay. All right, well, thank you very much. The next workshop will take place on the 15th of July. So we will have some more draft text for you then. Unless something comes up, we won't be discussing the nodes anymore, so we've cut that off.
Are you gonna be okay with that?
Maybe I will, just for fun. I, I might just bring it to you.
All I know is I can't wait for a development to come in for Ford and Beck.
All right, again, if there's anything that, as you're going through it, and if you look at again, and if you see something again, and you wanna talk about it in more detail, you can email me, you can call me. Any, any avenue that you'd like to discuss something in more detail, please, please don't hesitate. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciated those pictures of like Royal Oak.
Yeah, they're fun. Yeah, that, especially that development, I, I live over in that area. So seeing that transition from a dilapidated, old, really falling apart strip mall that really didn't have anything in there of substance or any, brought anybody in there except for a Secretary of State office, to now being this vibrant area where people do walk, and they do bike, and they do go and, and do all their, their shopping in there. And so it's, it's nice to see activity in that area, especially being so close to the hospital. I go to that hospital first off, so it's being able to go there and get something to eat as opposed to gas station food is, is good too.
I think one of the things that was interesting was that it was a redevelopment, because I think we get used to seeing things as they are, and we don't have the imagination to think about what it could look like under different circumstances.
What, what, what was it that, what was it that property that you showed us in Royal Oak?
The Royal Oak? It was just a giant, uh, giant, giant strip mall.
We had the pictures before.
Do you wanna see it again?
I didn't pay attention to what was there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
At one point, they had some, yeah, they had some bigger, big box things at one point, but the later half of, of 2010, 2012, they were, a lot of them were- but the later half of, of 2010, 2012, they were, a lot of them were just vacant. There was a lot of, I think there was a couple of pawn shops in there, there was a couple of resale shops. Again, most of the cars in there were for Secretary of State because that was the big, big one.
That's Royal Oak proper there?
Yes, mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, I liked, I liked the, the exercise we did at the, I don't, I can't remember the name of the development, but where Michael's is on Ford Road.
Yeah.
And looking at that parking lot, and, you know, I mean, if you think back years ago, that was an HQ with a man's lumber out front, I mean, it was so different. And now it looks like it does today, but there's also potential for what could happen in the future where that gets redeveloped again.
Yeah.
So Ford Road where Michael's is, you know.
Buffalo Wild Wings.
Yeah, behind Buffalo Wild Wings, that, you know, there was an HQ there years ago, if you remember HQ, back behind, and then.
They were Home Depot type.
It was like a Home Depot, yeah, Home Store, Home Quarters HQ. And then there was, uh, Man's Lumber was in the, in the, they were in an outlaw.
Do they still own that property?
The Verizon one?
Yeah, they, they still own it.
Yeah, not surprised. So.
Okay.
Our parking ordinance is nine, nine foot space.
Nine by 19.
That's number. Every city seems like they have. Cars are getting bigger. Out, you're hitting somebody's door.
Can't we just say though, that somebody that has a really big truck just can't park?
I'm looking at Commissioner Watkins down there, because.
Can I, can I tell you, can I tell you personally, Chicago and suburbs, all of them are too small. They've actually made them, you felt like every time you were getting out of the car, you were going to ding your door. My wife's trying to squeeze out, and you're trying to hold the door, it's, it's worse. So I agree with you, but Chicago, it'll give you a whole definition of what's small.
Park at a Home Depot, you'll feel how much.
Right.
Yeah, you can tell.
Because trucks go there.
Because a truck can park there.
Right.
I have, I'm allowing trucks there.
But maybe that's one way to, to deter people from park, from driving, you know? Maybe that's one way to deter people from, from driving, is we just make the spaces that much smaller so they have to, they have to walk, they have to ride a bike.
Well, Chicago has an alternative, we don't have the alternative.
Okay, so trustee Foster wants to build an underground subway system, is what I'm hearing, an elevated, an elevated system.
A loop through Canton.
I like it, let's do it.
A loop.
We'll put it in the master plan, we'll plan for it.
All right, this is nice, this is a normal time.
So I, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn to go to mansion.
Do we do public?
We had it at the beginning.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by.
Support.
More support by Commissioner Weber, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Who's supported?